Okay, we call this public hearing to order and Counselor Thompson will do the honors of the orders.
Thank you, Your Worship. The purpose of this hearing is to consider certain bylaws which, if adopted, shall amend the City of Grand Forks zoning bylaw number 2039. All persons who believe that their interest in property within the boundaries of the city is affected by the proposed bylaw shall be afforded a reasonable opportunity to be heard or present or present written submissions respecting matters contained in the bylaws that are the subject of this hearing. No one will be or should feel discouraged or prevented from making their views known. This hearing is open to the public and all representations to counsel form part of the public record. A live video and audio feed may be broadcast and recorded by GFTV. All information, correspondence, petitions, or reports that have been received concerning the subject bylaws that have been made available to the public. The correspondence and petitions received after July 3, 2019, date of notification, are available for inspection during the course of this hearing. All information, correspondence, petitions, or reports that have been received concerning the subject bylaws have been made available to the public. The correspondence and petitions received after July 3, 2019, date of notification, are available for inspection during the course of this hearing and are located on the information table in the foyer of the council chamber. Members of council may ask questions if they so wish. However, the main function of council members is to listen to the views of the public. It is not the function of council to debate the merits of the proposed bylaw with individual citizens or with each other at this hearing. Council debate on this, on the proposed bylaws is scheduled to take place during the next regular council meeting after the conclusion of this hearing. It should be noted, however, that for some items, a final decision may not be able to be reached at that meeting. It must be emphasized that council will not receive any representation from the applicant or members of the public after conclusion of this hearing. During a public hearing, people sometimes become enthusiastic or emotional. Regardless of whether you favor or oppose any application or argument, please refrain from applause or other expressions of emotion. Restrain enables others whose views may or may not coincide with your own to exercise their right to express their views and have them heard as an impartial aform as possible.
Thank you. And just to clarify, the next regular meeting, is this going to the August meeting or to tonight's meeting?
Tonight.
Tonight's meeting. Okay, it is. I should know that I read the agenda. And could I have confirmation from our corporate officer that we have done the compliance with section 466 of the Local Government Act?
Yes, sir. On July 3 and 10, there were advertisements in the local newspaper and in addition, 11 property owners within 30 meters of the applicant property were notified.
Thank you. And does Development and Engineering wish to present this basic request? And then the applicant.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, just briefly also, just to acknowledge that the owner, or the representative of the owner, Kent R. Ellis here as well. Now, this is a double zoning from R1 to R2 to allow a subdivision for three lots. Under the existing zoning, R1, two lots are allowed because it is a larger lot. It's probably the last large lot on that block. The rest have been subdivided in the past. And there also is an associated development variance permit to vary the rear setback. However, that setback is adjacent to a newly created lot if it goes forward. Other than that, it's fairly straightforward. There are a few of the buildings under construction now. They're proposing two duplexes and a single-family home on these simple lots, so it's considered to be affordable market ownership. And yes, we are recommending them. Subject to a public hearing approval of the...
Thank you. And we have received one submission.
One letter written.
Submission.
That's correct. I believe you have a memo about that in front of you. There were concerns regarding traffic and introducing higher density into the neighborhood.
I see you responded to each of their concerns individually with an answer. Thank you. And the next would be to the applicant. If you could come forward and present your project to council. I think there's a spot where you can turn on the mic if you'd like.
Hi, my name is Kent Riddle with Lakota Homes Corporation out of St. Edward. So, one of the reasons we're going ahead with this project is we had these modular homes that we just haven't been using for any particular thing because they're a bit on the small side. When we came across the opportunity to put them into Grand Forks and meet the small home requirement that you guys are trying to push forward with your OCP, we thought it was a really good fit of taking a modular home that we could totally update, make it into a small package, put it onto a small lot, and it would hopefully invite a new market that maybe that first-time home buyer can't get into. So, we felt it was kind of a really nice bridge, and we just haven't had the opportunity to do this anywhere else yet. So, I think Grand Forks is a little bit ahead on the small home stuff. There's a few places in Alberta that have approached us a little as well, but no one's as far ahead as you guys are. So, that was the reason for coming down here, looking around, to find a lot. And we're hoping to do a few more of these as well here, once we get these ones up and going. We've been a little bit delayed on our progress so far, and that's because we had already committed to a different project in Grand Forks, and we had some issues with that one. So, we've kind of pulled back our crews. We've been working on a different site, but that site's now just still complete. And now we'll be able to bring our crews back. And so, now the progress we're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood for each one as a single, because there's a single, and then the duplex is just two singles put together. So, we're looking at about two to three months for each one to complete. And that's with, you know, completely redoing the insides and stuff. Everything's brand-new. They all meet today's building code. So, we're actively involved with the planning department here. We meet with Dave on a regular basis. We're meeting all the standards. The electrical, we're meeting B.C.'s Silver Seal Acceptance Program, I believe, to make sure the electrical's up to speed and all that kind of stuff. So, we're going with all the proper permits. So, I think it's a entry-level home. It's a bit more than just a trailer or a really rundown place. It's a small footprint, so we think that it's going to attract that entry-level client. It's not going to be bringing in a family of nine. It's going to be, there's one bedroom upstairs, two bedrooms in the basement. So, we think it's going to get a small family and not increase the traffic drastically. I mean, it is a nice, it's a nice area. It's a nice lot. There's a school across. I mean, it's a busy area, but I don't think it's going to bring in all kinds of unwanted traffic and stuff like that. Is there any questions in particular I can answer?
Mr. Riddell, we'll go ahead with hearing from the public, and then you can respond to them if you like after we've heard from the public.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, stepping forward, anyone wishing to speak? Mr. Trevary?
My name is Fortunato Trevary. Most of you know me as Frank. I've been a taxpaying resident of Grand Forks for 45 years. Before I speak to the issue, I'd like to point out to council that I have five pieces of city correspondence in my hand and a Grand Forks Gazette that contains the notification of the zoning bylaw amendment that I believe we're discussing here this evening. I have sometimes questioned whether the city is putting my tax dollars to good use. Recent correspondence doesn't inspire much confidence that this is the case. It also leads me to question the competency of some individuals in the employment of the city. I have two letters dated July 4, 2019, notifying my wife and me of zoning amendment and development variance permit applications. Location of the property is identified as 2680 75th Avenue. The letters state that the zoning amendment application is asking to rezone the above-mentioned property from TC tourist commercial to HC highway commercial. The notification in the Gazette, however, is asking that the same property be rezoned, R1, single and two-family residential, to R2, small lot residential. When the letters arrived, I tried to make sense of the letters, but couldn't. However, on July 11, 2019, two other letters dated July 10, 2019, were hand-delivered to my door. The gentleman who delivered the letters informed me that there had been an error in the mailed-out letters and that these letters contained the correct information. The information in this second set of letters didn't match that which was in the Gazette. However, had they been mailed out, one would probably not reach its intended destination as it contained an incorrect mailing address. A fifth letter that I have is dated April 16, 2019, and is a copy of a letter sent to me in regard to another zoning amendment application. This letter was addressed to Fortunato Trevia. Being somewhat insulted, I took the letter to City Hall and asked the clerk to please return it to the sender, as there was no such person living at that particular address. When the clerk told me it was a typo, I sarcastically replied that it was a huge typo, as it is a long stretch from Trevia to Trevary. I further pointed out that the city has had little problem spelling my name correctly, sorry, that the city has had little problem spelling my name correctly on my tax and utility bills for the past 45 years. Despite the appellation I was given, I don't find it at all trivial in pointing out that it is gross negligence on the part of the Development Engineering and Planning Department to send out misinformation on very important issues and waste taxpayers' money in having to hand-deliver amended letters. Now, for the issue at hand. My wife and I reside at 2735 75th Avenue, across from the property in question. We also own an undeveloped lot that is on the corner of 75th and 27th Street that is directly across from the stated property. Needless to say, we have an interest in these proceedings and concerns. We are concerned that in a short period of time, there could be five additional families living in a space that is equivalent to the area of many of the lots on 75th Avenue. There isn't a single lot in the area of 75th, in this area of 75th Avenue, that has more than two families living on each lot. Actually, all contain single-family dwellings with the exception of two that have duplexes. The potential impact of the development, besides the problems that can arise with so many families and living in such close quarters, is the addition of five or more vehicles to add to the problems of already congested streets and intersections. 27th Street is used to access a school and a church. Drivers of large commercial vehicles who are motel guests use the street to park their rigs alongside the motel, and the neighborhood postal boxes are located there. 75th Avenue is often used as an ambulance corridor to and from the hospital and is the main access to the school playground and playing fields. A city wall is located on the avenue adjacent to the lot in question. We believe there should be a no-parking zone around the well to allow city crews unimpeded access. As an aside, there is an urgent need for traffic lakes at the intersection of 27th Street and Central Avenue. Safety is a major concern as this area of the city becomes more and more developed and traffic increases. Our biggest concern, however, is the process by which this lot was developed. A few weeks after the lot was sold, transport trucks delivered used modular home units to the lot. I made an inquiry of the driver as to the number of units that were to be delivered, and he informed me that in total, there would be 12 units, sufficient for six residences. Fearing that the units would be placed on pads and used for temporary housing, we were obviously concerned. We had seen no development plan, nor was there any permit, any building permit or transport permit in view. Because the units appeared late Friday and City Hall was closed for the weekend, I phoned Mayor Taylor to inquire as to what was happening. I was unable to reach the mayor, so I phoned Counselor Thompson. She had no knowledge in regard to this development. Subsequently, Mayor Taylor returned my call, but he too was unaware of what was happening. Monday morning, I went to City Hall to make inquiries. I talked to the building inspector who referred me to the engineering department. One of the employees from the engineering department spoke to me. She seemed to have some knowledge of what was going on. I asked to see a development plan for the lot and was told that City Hall did not have one. I asked if a building permit had been issued, but one was yet to be issued. She did tell me, however, that the modular units were from Calgary. They'd been part of the Olympic Village to house athletes during the 1988 Olympics. She informed me that the owner had made an appointment and would be speaking to the engineering department later that afternoon. Obviously, the engineering department was satisfied with the owner's presentation because soon after construction began on the site. I watched anxiously to see the progression of the construction and how the modulars would be integrated into the buildings. I can't say that I'm displeased with the results, although I am not sure that the construction satisfies the current bylaw law zoning requirements. R1 zoning allows a duplex and a garden suite not exceeding 90 square meters to be constructed on any given lot. If the second, if the second structure built on the lot is meant to be a garden suite, and if its basement is included in the total floor space of the structure, it appears that it exceeds the bylaw requirements. However, I'm not sure. I didn't take a tape measure to measure it. That being said, neither building looks at a place in the neighborhood, and there is sufficient space for onsite parking. For reasons stated, we are, however, opposed to having another duplex constructed on the property. It seems to me that on second thought, or on expressed first thought, the builder has decided to squeeze in another duplex. This requires rezoning and a variance to the setback requirement. That's why we're here this evening. If the rezoning and variance are granted, I believe the city will be on a slippery slope. It will be difficult in the future to deny others the same latitude. The process taken to date has been backwards. We believe that this is a process that should have been followed, a process that is followed by most B.C. communities. Number one, prior to issuing a building permit, the city should have requested a development plan from the owner, and the proposed plan should have been posted on the site. Number two, if the development plan required rezoning of the property, the protocol for proposed rezoning should have fallen into place with written notification containing accurate details given to all who might be impacted. Number three, a hearing such as this one should have been held, and the bylaw amendment then would have proceeded through council's legislative process. Number four, building plans should have been drafted accordingly and reviewed to ensure that all proposed construction conforms to the zoning bylaws, the building code, and the required setbacks. And then, finally, number five, the building permit could have been issued. Furthermore, if previously lived off, if previously lived in, off-site buildings were to be moved onto the property, a certified engineer's report confirming that they meet the specifications of their intended use should have been required. I question the wisdom of allowing 31-year-old modules to be integrated into new construction. Some communities do not allow any units older than 10 years to be relocated, and others do not allow integration of old construction with new at all. Just to give you an example, my daughter is, at the present moment, talking to a contractor in regard to her home in Port Coquitlam, where she wants to push out her living room about nine, nine feet from its present area. There is a picture window in that particular living room. She was told by the contractor that they can't repurpose that, that particular picture window because the renovation is new construction, and therefore there is a need for a new picture window. Okay? In conclusion, it is our opinion that if the owner's development plans were to subdivide the site and construct five residences on the lot, the developer should have been upfront and should have initially put forth that proposal. We therefore strongly urge council to carefully consider the implications of the proposed amendment and vote against it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Trevary. Mr. Norton, did you wish to comment on this?
I'm going to make some comments, yes.
I'm not sure whether Mr. Riddell wishes to respond to this citizen at this point, or whether we should hear yours and then let him respond to both the presentations. I would like to former, I would like you to come forward, make your comments, and then Mr. Riddell can, can comment at the end. So, Danny Norton?
My neighbor. Hi, I'm Danny Norton. I live at 2646 75th Avenue, and it's two doors down from where the building site is. I have a couple of things that I would like to address. My background in this particular area is I've been in real estate. I've been in the development game, and I've been in general construction. So, I'm familiar with all three areas. Now, a developer, when he goes to purchase land, before he puts anything into the ground or starts the construction, he obtains zoning. Usually, what happens is he'll put a subject two with the land, a subject two zoning suitable and acceptable to the purchaser. Now, this apparently wasn't done. So, it kind of leads me to believe that it's not, he must be one of his first times into the development game, because that's a mistake that nobody that is a developer really makes. Now, this particular zoning is very difficult. The engineering department and the city planning department didn't do their homework. What they don't realize is that by allowing a small lot on this piece of land here, they've also opened up every other vacant lot to that type of zoning on that street. Now, there's probably 40 houses on the street. I don't know how many of them are going to really enjoy having small lot housing beside them. It will affect the resale value of the houses. The resale value will, they'll probably lose between $50,000 and $100,000 on the resale value of their houses right now. On top of all the points that my neighbor has put forth and a few of the letters that I'm aware of that have come into the city, it doesn't seem right that somebody should put the cart before the horse and be relatively assured because the developer has spent a lot of money putting this site together so far. Now, that sort of leads me to believe that he must have some idea or some inkling of what zoning is going to be in the end result. Now, I wouldn't want to think that somebody in the council or the planning or the engineering department has already given them the okay to go ahead and build it because the zoning will be approved. It's too dangerous. It's setting too many precedents. It's not welcome. The site that's under question right now, I mean, that's fine if it goes through as small lot housing. There's not too much anybody can do about it, but it does set a very dangerous precedent for the city. Now, if there was no other land in the city or no other vacant lots that were available and already zoned, I would think, being a developer, that I would be first looking at those pieces of property that are already zoned. So, it makes it very easy for me to go ahead and build. The points that have been made before by my neighbor, I agree with. You can't mix old construction with new construction. It just doesn't work. But that's okay. I mean, I've only been kicking around that business for 52 years. So, I mean, it's nothing serious. Apart from all that, it's, it's not right that something like this should happen to a street that has the types of houses on it that does. The, the traffic congestion and everything else with these houses, small lots, could be purchased relatively, I should say, I don't want to say relatively cheaply, but relatively inexpensively, dentured around and planted out. Now, if there was no other small lots available in the city, I would say, why not go for this? But there is. There is a lot of vacant lot here in the city, which would behoove a developer to look at them first before he started into this with absolutely no safety net. If he doesn't have the zoning, he's really in a pickle if he's already put money into it. Now, that's too bad, because that's just a risk you're on in the development game. You don't buy land without having it zoned properly first. If it can't be zoned that way, you don't want it, or you have to change what you're going to build. You can't go into a place and force something down people's throat. They don't like it. Now, with the other lots that are on the street, there is the large lot beside Hutton School, which I believe was owned by AVH, which is agricultural land now, but that is still open for small housing if this goes through. The land on the other side of it is open again for somebody coming in and wanting small housing, and it shouldn't be refused because it already is in the neighborhood. But since there isn't, I think it's too much of a precedent for it to be set. Because once you've set it, that's it. Game over. You can't go back down the road. It's closed. That's about what I have to say. Now, there is one other little amendment that I ran into just this afternoon in discussing this particular thing. in discussing this particular thing. There is a gentleman in Grand Forks here that is willing to purchase the land and buildings, as is, for the developer's cost. And then we'll proceed to do whatever he wants to do with it, and he'll apply for zoning first. But there is that one. It's also an option for the developer to get him out of an ugly situation before it gets too strange.
So I'm not really sure we're here to set this deal up between this third party and the developer, but you're certainly welcome to speak to him after the meeting in terms of that option.
Well, I'm perfectly available, and everybody in town, I think, has my phone number. So it's, I'm not exactly the most low-profile person in Grand Forks.
No, you're not. Thank you very much, Mr. Norton.
Okay. Thank you very much, Counselors. Mayor?
May I invite Mr. Riddell back to the stand there to answer some of those concerns?
Thank you. I'm gonna be a little bit vague about the all the development and the applications, and I'm only vague because I wasn't involved. And I apologize, I kinda came on board late April. And when I first came down to Grand Forks, I was dealing with another property for the first month and a half. And then I've just kinda taken over all the Grand Forks properties that we're developing. So I, unfortunately, am not able to speak to when applications were first made, anything along that lines. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit vague on that. And I don't know, Wendy, if you know any of that history that you wanted to share, you can certainly speak to if you have any knowledge of that.
Um, briefly.
Oh, you gotta kill your button.
Oh. Yeah. Briefly, Mr. Mayor, Council.
Yes, when the milk originally came in, the, the ideal was to place a duplex and garden suite, which is allowed under the existing zoning. And I do believe they placed, situated the duplex in the original garden suite in a place that if they did get the rezoning, they could move ahead with another duplex. That's the history behind that.
Thank you. As far as mixing the old with the new, we have to meet all the current standards. So we're replacing on all the properties. We've put brand-new roofs on. We put new trusses on the roofs. We put new shingles on the roof. We're putting all new PVC windows in all the buildings. All the electrical is meeting all the B.C. standards. So we have, everything's done with full permits, and the inspectors come out and stuff. Any of the new construction in the basement, because the basements are gonna be fully developed with two bedrooms and a bathroom downstairs, no suites in it. So it's just a main floor and a basement, but not a suite. So the new construction downstairs has to meet all the building code. And then we're replacing all the furnaces, all the hot water tanks, all the furnace ducting. We're not using any of that. We're replacing all of it. So the only thing that's staying is the geoprogram, the insulation, and the plywood on the floors. That's the only thing that stays. Everything else is brand-new. Brand-new floors, brand-new. Even, even the, between the duplexes, we're doing full two thousand and nineteen standards for fireproofing. And that goes right from the foundation, from the basement, all the way out through the basement level, all the way up through the main floor, all the way up through the attic and to the roof. And so we meet two thousand and nineteen standards for that, and that's all inspected and approved through Grand Forks. As to the proper zoning and stuff, we haven't moved ahead. One of the reasons we've been a bit of a standstill, why we haven't proceeded and done this building besides some internal issues that we were dealing with, is we were waiting for this process, because that affects where we would come up with our sewer and our water. And so again, we've been working with Grand Forks Planning and Development and Public Works on where to access the water, because all the services are there. So the sewer's there, and the water's there. The sewer's in the back alley, the water's there. We haven't actually connected and made those connections yet, because we're waiting on this process. Because if we get approved for this, then it would change where we go, because we would have to, obviously, dig up the street and repair the street. So we didn't wanna have to do that two and three different times. So that's one of our reasons for, for not proceeding with our infrastructure work as far as the utilities goes. I'm just kinda waiting for this process. So I don't feel like we're putting the apple, you know, before the cart. I feel like we are doing our due diligence and waiting and making sure that we've, you know, got everything approved okay through you guys. I think that's the major issue. I did submit a plan to Wendy as far as how we've addressed the parking issue. We feel that we've got adequate parking for, for the properties. They are under ninety meters. They're about seventy, seventy-two meters each. So they only require one parking spot each. So we do have a visual of that. I'm not sure if you're able to put that up. So, so that's just a rendering. And we've got that same site view that you guys had before. Can you do that one as well?
Or the PDF?
The PDF one as well. And so the, the parking subject to, the driveways are subject to move according to the well. I'm sorry, again, I'm a little bit vague on the history on the well. And I know there was some, some discussions on that well about whether it was active or not gonna be active or whether they were gonna cap it off. So at this point in time, we just put the parking driveway there. But of course, those can be, those can be moved around a little bit. At the back of Lot One, we'd be having a parking pad back at the very back of that nor bridge or anything, just a parking pad at the back there as well. So we felt that we addressed the parking issue for the neighborhood as well. So we're not counting on street parking and stuff. I think those are most of my points, unless you guys have specific questions.
Could we get clarification through you to staff about the, I know the notices went out. And I know there was a couple of different things happening at the same time, or a couple of developments. Like we had tonight, we had two of them on the agenda. Is that what Mr. Traberry was referring to with the two different notices? Is that, or not? Oh, okay.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I do believe the first letter that went out was a mistake. There was a mistake in the body of the letter, which is why we immediately had delivered the correct, correct notice. And the address and everything was okay. It was just, it gets part of a template issue. The zones were wrong. So, but we immediately took steps to correct that. And it still meets the legislative requirements.
So you did meet the legislative requirements? Thank you. Counselor Thompson?
Sorry. Is this property that is subject to this rezoning, is that the property that's already being developed? So you're, you're coming sort of after the fact for the rezoning?
No, sorry, the, the two properties that are existing that we've already put on there, they, they do meet the proper guidelines already. We have not started the third buildings.
Those two?
Yeah.
And then there's another duplex?
Yeah, that one hasn't been started. There's no construction. Nothing's happened on that one. So we're waiting for this process first before we start that.
Okay.
So you, well, I just, just, I just wanted to be sure that I'm understanding that, so, so you've got Lot Two that already has the, that's already been developed with the duplex and the one house?
Correct. I guess a better way to say it would be call that Building Two rather than Lot Two. So right now, on that lot, that's all just one big lot right now. And so Building Two is developed with a duplex. We meet the guidelines and the standards now. Building One is also put on site, and that would be considered our garden suite. But we're looking at the rezoning and changing it around. And then we wouldn't call it duplex with a garden suite. We'd call it single-family residence, a duplex. And then the third building would be a duplex as well. Thank you.
So we're asking for the setbacks to allow one more duplex?
Correct. So on Lot Three, Lot Two's variance is a little bit short is the problem. So off the back deck between Lot Two and the new proposed Lot Three, that's where our variance that we're asking for is. So it affects, it affects a property that we're creating, in a sense.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. And I wonder, from the residents, is there anything further you'd like to say in response to Mr. Riddell?
Yeah, I, may I say something? I hope we're not getting confused with that Lot One, Lot Two, Lot Three. The existing lot is one lot.
Yeah, correct.
This is a proposal now to subdivide the lot. My concern was that the subdivision should have occurred before any building took place. I question whether the building on what is labeled there, Lot One, the smaller of the two buildings, actually meets the current zoning bylaws. I, I would like verification from the engineering department that in fact, that particular building, the floor space of that building is ninety square meters.
Okay. And at this point in time, I would think that because they have a building permit and gone ahead with that, that in fact, it was in compliance with the zone that was currently there, or is currently there, the one we're planning to change. So I think the answer is yes.
If you say so, that's fine. But I, just looking at the building myself, I, I question whether that's the case. But, but I'm not arguing about that anyways. Okay? Because the, the two buildings definitely fit into what is on the street. My concern is throwing in another, another duplex.
Right, got it. And Mr. Norton, did you have anything to say?
The only, I would have to question the, all the setbacks and everything else, because I'd have to go over and measure them. But it's called, it's still a small lot if you put that third building there. If it's a small lot, you're in a very dangerous precedent-setting deal. And you're not gonna be able to get out of it. Because once one developer comes in with small lots, any other developer can come in and demand the same and equal treatment on any of the other lots.
Right. And you made that clear in your presentation, Mr. Norton.
Okay. Now, to me, that's way over the top. And that's more important for me. The buildings that are there, fine. If they are, their lots, their backyard is no bigger than what my backyard is.
Okay.
And I'm not gonna complain about it. I mean, I have a big backyard. I love it. But you put another building in there, I'm sorry, you've cut a lot of stuff way down. The next thing about it is where it says lane. I'm not sure that really is a lane, unless that was taken out when the first part of the property was bought, and that land was donated back to the city. Because in the original piece of land that was there, which from Highway Commercial all the way back to Seventy-Fifth was one piece of land, and the person that owned it would not grant the city access for a lane. Now, unless that has been addressed, I'm sorry, you probably don't even realize that. But that's the case of that particular piece of property. That's why the back lane dead ends at that property.
Okay.
So you're, you're talking about a lane that is there.
I'm gonna ask for a comment here from planning. Wendy?
I think Daniel's gonna put up the plan, showing the lot. There is in fact a registered lane on the southeast property line.
If I could just clarify that?
Yeah.
I, I, I could clarify that. A few years ago, there was an application from the owner of the, the big chunk of property that went to the highway, including that particular lot, to have that, the front area zoned commercial, because the whole thing was zoned R1 at one time. And it, that was granted. And I believe that when, when that was granted, that chunk of property was given to the city as, as a lane. Because they wanted to use a back end as parking for any, any commercial building that would go there. And at the time, the, the city did not grant, didn't allow them to use it as commercial, didn't allow the change from, from R1 for the back end. They allowed the front end to go commercial, because the, the rest of the highway lots were zoned commercial. Okay? So that's, that's how that lane came into effect.
Okay. Have we covered everything? I believe we have. And if that's the case, we're heading into a seven o'clock meeting. I'll call this hearing adjourned. Thank you all for coming and for making your presentations. This will be on the agenda this evening. Thank you, Council. Take a break. You've got fifteen minutes.